I suppose to read out the news. Just the agenda for tonight. Are you home, please?
How you doing this evening?
You're doing good.
Good, yeah. Yep. Nice to see you in person.
Like good here. Earl Rosig was coming. Healer thing. Yep. Just almost on that because you found like.
Brand Island.
Oh, yeah. Carter's. I saw Carter's. All houses. That's a big farm. Yeah. I live there for a couple of years. Surprise you laugh. Everyone has been to the United. Yeah. It was. It was building that plant in Georgia.
Right.
Yep. And even though it was a beautiful ride, I pull out my prize. And then get on the road. I didn't have to stop until I pulled out the other side.
Where I moved to North Hero back in all three, it was way up at the north end of the island. But I was commuting down South Berlin. A little bit of a.
So we sort of. I wasn't saying much for my family, they're doing anyway. Construction. Hiring.
Who did you work for? For contractors?
For hiring different contractors.
So you mean Mary Smith and all?
You did. Pizzagalli, did someone do the thing?
You worked for Pizzagalli.
You did, right?
Got Slash BZ Construction, yeah. Twenty-eight years, everyone.
After we built the plant, a lot of effort did a lot of maintenance work. Construction.
Well, that's a shame. They're gonna be closing it down. A shame. A shame that they're gonna be closing it down.
What makes me feel old since I was just the first employee. We're here. About that year. I was hired. I was sent to get it built and then manage it. Who was that originally built with eighties? First can of product came out from the. Is eighty. Eight and three.
Okay.
Let's start at construction. Eighty. Eighty, eighty-two primarily.
Yeah, before my time in the lines, you were your best.
You said you're originally from.
I'm from Maine originally.
From Maine?
Yeah.
When I left by. We bought. The whole place. Pier Isle, actually. We're getting right over the suspension bridge. The right hand side that sort of run down. That arena and restaurant. Yeah, I know. Especially. We bought it. Think how many. Better be happy.
I've driven across that bridge, but not many times.
So sister, sister bridge of Calhoun and Gurnee. Yep. It's the one that went into the. Apparently they experimented. Decided to. They got to a point where they designed this airplane. The wind picked them up.
Yep.
Pretty amazing. They sort of reinforced our.
Lesson learned.
Wind discounter. Then they would actually load their engines with the width. They'd have little wings on it.
Yeah, amazing videos for watch.
I'm not engineering. I serve as a combat engineer.
Oh, this is. This is.
Right now, they put in film credits. You know Paul Yander?
Oh, yes, my neighbor.
He was my neighbor in the south area.
Okay.
He was married. Well, he's rather married, yes. They had their kids, our kids and their kids. Good friend.
Yeah.
When we were living in. That place right there on that fat water.
Right, yeah. So if you see Paul, just say hi from there. I will absolutely do that, girl.
Having some coffee in the air.
I see him quite frequently.
I know he got married again. Is he still married?
Yep, Cheryl is his wife. She's out there this morning. I'll walk you to her dog.
And his kids live close by?
I don't think so. No. I want to say one of them lives in Hawaii. They, they get there. Every year, but.
Well, we were just.
Still freelancing. But most recently that I know of. The North Hero has given me. Yeah, he was the.
Really? He visited us. Dear eyes.
Back Alice. One of my other sons in the post guard and his very birth assignment was eastward. Eastward, yeah. Yeah. Which that's a long ways. Long drive from.
Yeah. He just turned sixty. He goes to. Amy was taking care of people in the cabin. Yep. Jersey.
Yeah. Yeah, the blast owner before Richmond was saying the name is called the Blast. And he had built, funded, I think since the eighties.
Yeah. So what are they doing in North Hero?
Well, they totally renovated the inside.
Really?
And. I think the pier bar kind of falls there. They put a. Put a new thing right on. A green rope. So they got, they got some growing. Where they got their state. Really nice place. Yeah, then also it's a short acre. Changed ownership, the last.
That's right, for the lawn.
Yeah. Right as you come into the North Hero.
I go for Dave Carter and his wife. Actually built a house. Little reader.
Yep.
I'm fine. I just thought if I don't die, I'm gonna pull it off.
That hunter, the hunter lunch.
Reminds me. Yes, see, I don't have the career or career. The trick is to think that my. Dean, are you a runner?
I'm a very. I'm a former. I still run, but I'm. Yeah, I ran. CrossFit and track. I talk to her sadly with how much I run. I, I tell people it sucks to get old. To rally up and pass it.
If I could run like that again, I'd save somebody. They'll run it across.
Well, I need to grab.
Okay.
I got no one right there. Thank you.
My car's moved Vermont into Burlington in nineteen eighty-eight. I think I'd be richer.
I appreciate.
Paul and I were neighbors. He shared it. I guess there was a. I don't recall the meeting.
We're gonna, we're gonna start the meeting. Feel free to finish your dinner, but we want to stay somewhat on schedule. Thanks very much for showing up. This was a great venue to have our meeting. And he's been the first one we've had here. And that's one hit. We've got a full agenda tonight. Kevin Chu from Vermont Futures Project will be. Talking about his work and the new economic action plan. We've got the presentation on changes to the regional plan. We've got meeting members to elect. And we've got a transportation program to approve. I think that's all.
Yeah.
So. So with that, I'm going to start with the usual introductions. I'm going to call towns. And if you could speak up and identify yourselves when the town is called, that'd be great. Starting with, I guess, the. Brandis County Youth Representative, who was just appointed Amelia De Mars, who's not here tonight, but. Hopefully she'll be coming in future. Then we'll go to Auburn Town.
Danielle James Swiner here virtually.
Auburn Village. Or Baker, sorry. Bakersfield.
New Orleans.
On demo call.
Uh, Burke here. Venusburg Hall. Venusburg Town. Fairfax. Fairfield. Fletcher. Franklin.
Devon and.
Georgia.
Earl Rosig with Georgia.
Hurst Week.
Brand Island.
Barclay Moore.
And Howard De Mars. And for the record, Peter, I'd like to just say that Amelia apologizes for being late, but she did have to close up her work tonight, which I thought was a bit much for someone of her age, but. Hmm, I guess we just let her go. She'll be attending via Zoom with me here in a bit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Iowa Matt. Montgomery. North Hero.
Andy Olling.
Redford. Sheldon. St. Albans City.
Diddler.
St. Albans Town.
Marion Shelton.
Megan Sherlin via Zoom.
South Hero. And yours truly, Peter Zemore. Swan.
Temple River Sound Town.
Nick Brussels, Swan Town.
David Roberts, Sound Village.
Heidi Richolanta, Swanton Village.
Thank you. And then perhaps the staff can identify themselves.
Dean, your staff.
Hi, Catherine Demitrik, Tech Care Director.
Luke Slamba, Regional Planner here via Zoom.
Great, thank you. Our next item is opportunity for public comment. Any public comment tonight? And the next item is minutes of the June twenty twenty-five meeting. Is there, before any discussion, is there a motion relating to the minutes that anyone would like to make?
Thank you, Liz.
Any other comments before we get to a margin? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as the amendment will change.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Next, we have our.
Hello, Steve. I was the president.
Sorry about that. I sort of remembered. Our featured speaker, Kevin Chu from Vermont Futures Project. He was here. A year ago, January, to present information on the data that Vermont Futures Project selects. And basically, they were formed to aggregate relevant data affecting Vermont's economic status in the future over a horizon that is longer than the typical two-year gubernatorial cycle. And they've done that for many years and they started going further than that. And Kevin's prepared to talk about that tonight.
Snuck behind it. Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it. Lovely dinner. This is my first time in the space and it's beautiful. I'll begin with a little bit about who I am since I'm meeting many of you for the first time. And then we'll get into the work of Futures Project. So I have the privilege of growing up in Vermont. I grew up in Burlington. My parents immigrated from Southeast China back in nineteen eighty-six, ended up in Vermont of all places. They chose Vermont because I have an aunt that married an American and they happen to live in this great state. But my parents left behind everything they knew in their mid twenties and made the brave decision to come to the U.S. in search of their American dream, economic opportunity. So I feel very privileged that they were able to find that here in Vermont. They were able to make things work. Neither of them spoke English when they arrived. Neither of them had a college degree, but they were able to find jobs. And they found a community of people that supported their success and they were able to purchase a home. They put three kids through college. And my work is very much motivated by that background. I want to make sure that Vermont continues to be a place of opportunity, not only to. I want to make sure that Vermont continues to be a place of opportunity, not only today, but moving forward into the future as well. I think about that story of my parents, and sometimes I ask, would that same story be as likely today as it was in the eighties? And I'm not sure. You know, so that's, that's what motivates me. The mission question of the Futures Project is how can we use data to support the evolution of Vermont's economy towards a thriving future full of opportunity for all? So you see that opportunity word show up again. How are we answering this? Well, our latest answer was the development and launch of the Economic Action Plan. There are copies around the room on the table. And this plan. There you go. So this plan is really to set Vermont on a path towards affordability and abundance. It wasn't just an analysis of the quantitative data, but it was also in response to what I heard from Vermonters. I had the fun job of traveling around the state and engaging with communities, not only to bring data out, but to do a bit of critical listening as well, to try to understand what are the challenges that Vermonters face? What are the barriers they see? But also, what are the hopes, dreams, and ambitions of Vermonters for the next 10, 15 years? What does Vermont want to be when it grows up? These are all really important questions for us to ask and then bring into the research as well, right? Growth towards what and for whom? So through this work, we were looking at all these different symptoms that we hear about on a regular basis. These are common keywords that you'll see in media stories, the symptoms listed there. But it quickly became evident that we had to address root causes if we really wanted to make progress. So we honed in on the pillars of people and places, demographics and housing scarcity specifically. So we'll take a look at demographics first, and then we'll get into the housing data. This is the distribution of Vermont's population from the year 2000. Sorry, the toolbar at the top is locking up, but that's the year 2000. What pains me about presenting this slide is admitting that 2000 was 25 years ago. I don't know where the time went, but what you'll notice is that there was a large working age population relative to the number of children and elderly. There were about 226,000 Vermonters between the ages of 25 to 49, and about 77,065 plus. So that's, that's the year 2000. Now, fast forward, and the picture looks very different now. So that 25 to 49 cohort has shrank by about 30,000. That's our workforce. That's our tax base. Those are the folks who are often paying into commercial insurance. So when we start to think about those symptoms again, whether it's healthcare, education, affordability, workforce shortages, these are all impacted by demographics. And 65-plus population in that 25-year period has nearly doubled. Right? So when we take this age distribution and then look at the data in tandem with workforce data, this is the picture that we get. The green bars show the number of people in an age cohort who are participating in the labor force. The blue bar shows how many people within that age cohort. Right? So how do we address our workforce shortages? There are two main buckets of strategies. There's efficiency. How can we do more with what we have? How do we remove barriers to labor force participation? But you can only grow the green to the extent that there's blue. Right? And you see, it's a very unbalanced chart. So we also need expansion strategies, increasing the working age population. That's part of the solution to put Vermont on that path towards affordability and abundance. The way I like to think about this, so we were just chatting here over dinner about soccer in Vermont, how we're rapidly becoming a soccer state. The University of Vermont were national champions. Vermont Green FC is playing in the National USL II Championship Game. And I almost think of the workforce as like our active playing roster. And the way I would describe it is we have a lot of seniors who are going to be graduating from the workforce soon, and we need to recruit the next class of freshmen or maybe transfer sophomores to restock our talent pool. There's my sports analogy for the night. So beyond just saying we have a workforce shortage, let's quantify what that is. On an annual basis, Vermont needs to be adding about 13,500 people into the workforce. Again, some of that can come from people who are already here and not participating. How do we get them back in? But a lot of this will also need to involve attracting more talent to the state. On an annual basis, there's about 17,150 retirements. That figure comes from the Vermont Department of Labor, so 17,000-ish through 2032. And you compare that with the number of high school seniors, which is about 5,300 for the whole state. Right? So those two numbers don't balance out, which means we need to be attracting more working age families here. More, we need to be adding more kids to our school system. A school enrollment has declined by about 20,000 over the past 20 years. So that 13,500 number was the basis for our long-term target, which some of you may have heard or seen. This is a number that gets a lot of buzz whenever I talk about it. We set a goal, a target, an ambitious one, yes, to grow Vermont to 802,000 people by 2035. And yeah, you're like, okay, you picked that just for the area code. Cool. This is where that 13,500 number is important, because when we project it out to 2035, 2040, the numbers get in the 800,000 range. 800,000 has very little meaning in a Vermont context, but 802, everyone remembers and talks about and takes a lot of pride in. So that's an important part of goal setting. So from there, right? Oh, by the way, the background is an image from the solar eclipse. And based on the number of visitors that we had that day, we actually had over 802,000 people in the state on that one day. And we're still here. Things didn't break. No, it's possible. When we take a look at the economic data, it's easy to conclude that Vermont needs more people. But there's another part to the story that we can all help to tell, which will help us make progress towards these long-term goals. More people need Vermont. I think some people are figuring this out. That's why there's been recent in-migration to Vermont. There's a lot of demand for Vermont right now. That's actually something that gives me hope, right? It's challenging in the short term, because more demand for Vermont means prices in the housing market are going up. But I was talking to a professor at Middlebury College, who grew up in rural Alabama. And the way he framed it was that his hometown, they could invest in economic development. They could try to build more houses, but a lot of people don't want to be there. They're moving away. So the housing market's kind of crashing there. And we were talking about how rising prices in Vermont is an indicator that people want to be here, which inherently is a good thing if we can create the housing capacity to meet that demand. So how are we doing with that? Unfortunately, not as good as we, we could be doing or should be doing. When we take a look at the housing data, about a quarter of homes in Vermont were built before 1940. We have some of the oldest housing stock in the country. And then we used to build at a relatively healthy pace in the seventies and eighties to meet the needs of the population at that time. But in recent decades, housing, new housing construction has slowed significantly. And our built environment, the homes that we have now, don't necessarily meet the needs of our current population as well. So when we see this data and then start to take a look at available inventory, predictably, it's been going down. And the housing shortage that we're feeling acutely isn't something that was caused by the pandemic. That's a myth I hear a lot. Availability was declining even before the start of the pandemic. And just like with many other things, COVID just accelerated a trend that was already happening. And we've also seen a divergence between median home sales price and median household income. This is that affordability challenge that Vermonters are talking about. And then I come to the housing permits data, right? This is a way that we can measure or keep score on how we're doing year to year. How many homes are we allowing to be built, right? Because if I say that word with a slightly different pronunciation, permit, permit, permission, that's how many we allow to be built. And we're, we're in a moment when many Vermonters would agree that we are in a housing crisis. Yet there are some barriers self-imposed that are in the way of adequately meeting the moment. Right? When I hear the word crisis, I think, okay, that is trying to instill a sense of urgency. How do we, how do we react with an adequate level of urgency? So as much as I love charts and data, and I can nerd out on this stuff all day, I recognize that we also live in a world where sometimes memes or images are a really good way to communicate information. So I've got this slide here. One of these things is accused of attracting crime, lowering property value, and even changing the character of a place. And it's actually illegal in many communities, and the other one is cannabis. Almost every town I drive through in Vermont, there's a dispensary. And I just wish that we would also see an equal level of activity when it comes to housing starts. So maybe, maybe we need to change the narrative. Let's frame it positively. Let's talk about the benefits. One of these things reduces stress and anxiety and helps people sleep at night and can even boost the economy. Again, the other one is cannabis. Priorities. So if housing is a human right, then it should be right to build housing. Now, I mixed some numbers and pictures on my next two slides, and I'll say that this is the first time I'm presenting on these two slides. I'm debuting new content for you. So looking for feedback, help me refine it. I was looking at old census data from 1970s, and what I found was that median household size in 1970 was about 3.21. And that number, so I keep that in mind, 3.21 in 1970 today, it's about 2.3, right? When I take a look at that and I think, okay, what if Vermont had the same median household size now? How many people would we have in the state? We'd have nearly 900,000 people if we still had 1970-level median household size. But we don't. And predictably, it's gone down, because as a population ages, kids have grown up and they moved out of state because we didn't build enough houses for them to stay. So now we actually have a lot of empty bedrooms all around the state in homes where it's occupied by maybe one or two adults. But we can't access that untapped potential, that latent capacity, because there's not enough mobility in the housing market. So building some new homes also helps people who are here already to find the right housing to meet, meet their current needs versus what the needs might have been 30, 40, 50 years ago. So back to the main points towards affordability and abundance. I want to leave you with a framework, a Venn diagram, to take a lot of these complicated issues and try to put it into a decision-making framework that helps us move towards solutions. Vermont right now is at the intersection of the blue and the green circles, which is I want ample services and I want low density. The result is high cost of living. We are experiencing that. So again, as I've traveled around the state and I've listened to Vermonters, spoken with over 6,000 people over the past three years, I keep hearing that the cost of living is too high. So how do we lower the cost of living? There's two pathways. You can choose the scarcity pathway, and those conversations are already playing out all over our state. That's hospital closure, service cuts, school consolidation. If we don't like that pathway, the other option is an abundance one. Accelerate housing, grow the population. Embrace the idea that people are the solution and not the problem. And yes, that does mean a little bit more density, but I'll add some numbers to contextualize that. One of the common refrains, the common pushback that I hear is, oh, if we grow the population to 802,000, we're going to turn into New Jersey. There are bumper stickers that say, don't Jersey Vermont. I saw one a month ago. People have made lawn signs, there's a Facebook page. I think you could even buy a t-shirt that says, don't Jersey Vermont. So I took a look at the data, and New Jersey's about 1,200 people per square mile. Vermont's at 70 people per square mile. That's a huge range. And if we grow from our current population to 802,000, we'll go from 70 people per square mile to 87 people per square mile. Do you know how big a square mile is? It's huge. It's like 624 acres. 628? 640, 640 acres. Right? So 17 more people in 640 acres. Puts it into perspective. All right. So I'm going to wrap up by trying to make change even less scary. To get to 802,000, Vermont would only need to grow by about 2% per year. Right? It's one thing to say we need to add 155,000 more people to the state, which again, sounds like a big and scary number in a Vermont context, but 2%. And take that number and apply it to your community. If you live in a town of 1,000 people, that means how do you welcome 20 new residents next year? Right? And if we can all embrace that 2% mindset and just do our little bit in our own place collectively, that'll lead to transformative change. All right, one more for you. So many towns in Vermont actually have fewer people today than they did at one point in the past. This is what I call latent capacity. This research was inspired by a neighbor of mine who said Vermont doesn't have the capacity for more people. We don't have the carrying capacity. And I just thought that was a really interesting statement. So again, we have census records all the way back to the 1800s for each town. And lo and behold, all of the areas that are blue and green on this map have experienced depopulation. A lot of the growth has happened in and around Chedden County and some of the resort towns. But if we were to just say, let's restore every town back to its historical peak, that alone would add over 70,000 people to the state. And that's just a rural revitalization strategy. Right? So that gets us halfway there. Now, one more for you. So Y802. It's about getting back on track. One of the phrases that we all probably encounter a lot is, we are living through unprecedented times. How many times have you heard that? Too many. But from a data perspective, it's actually true. The past two decades are the outlier. So when we take a look at the trajectory from 1960 all the way to the year 2000, there was a steady level of growth that sort of just flattened out and plateaued over the past two decades. The 802 goal, yes, it means accelerating from where we are, but it just gets us back on track based on that long-term historical growth. So I'll wrap up just by saying thank you for having me. And if you are interested in becoming an ambassador and carrying data-informed conversations back to your communities into your friend groups, this is a really fun dinner conversation. You can add yourself to the ambassador list. Don't worry, I'm not going to spam you with emails. Periodically throughout the year, as I create new data visualizations, we send them out to ambassadors so that if you want to post on your local front porch forum, or just share with a friend or neighbor, you have that data available to you. It's, it's more about empowering you to be able to have conversations about the future of Vermont that are based on fact rather than just the narratives that we hear on a day-to-day basis. Thank you very much.
Hello. What, can we ask Kevin maybe to speak for a moment?
You want to?
Yeah.
I need to take a few questions.
Go ahead, Eddie. Oh, Howard.
Hi, Kevin. Howard De Mars from Grand Alton. Thank, thank you very much for a very fine speech there. I just had maybe a couple of comments for you and, and thoughts. I feel entirely like yourself that we definitely need to increase the demographics to include more young people, but they're dropping like flies. And I agree with some of your thoughts on this, but I have a whole bunch of nieces and nephews, and my own children fall within the, the demographics we're discussing. And they're facing significant challenges trying to realize the American dream, which is why we're losing this demographic. And it's, you know, some of it's market, a lot of it's the market with the housing. People. People, part of the American dream is to own a home. And that's just totally unrealistic and not attainable for the, this generation. And I find that very, very troubling. Uh, but, okay, I, I see where you're discussing the housing crisis, but the housing crisis is not predicated simply on zoning regulation. I've been involved in planning and zoning for a long time. And I feel our town's zoning is more than adequate. Unfortunately, uh, living in Grand Isle, most homes that are built out here are not housing, housing that uh, are going to be a, a new starter home. And in fact, a lot of the existing, existing ones are priced so that neither are they, Kevin. Well, what needs to happen here is we're gonna have to incentivize this some way so the people that make the money on these projects get some kind of something. Uh, let's face it, they're in this for the money. In order to produce more affordable housing, which if we don't, we're sank. The bad option's gonna happen that you talked about. We're already headed there. It's, it's gonna get worse. But, you know, young people are concerned with the cost of daycare. So the, the people that are left here are having fewer or no children. Next is the housing. Yes, the housing crisis is awful. But nothing's gonna happen until there's more of it. And there's not gonna be more of it, Kevin, until it's incentivized. There has to be enough gain for these people. We're gonna have to make, I hate to say it, but something along the lines of condos, something, you know, we're gonna have to approve that. I, I live in Grand Isle, which is fairly exclusive, but we don't zone against this type of housing. In fact, we have a very nice spot where we have senior housing and a nice spot, uh, where we have uh, low-income people. And they're not a burden on the community, they're an asset. Uh, I, I don't know of anyone that complains about them. But the problem is market-driven. That's where you need to emphasize the problem here. Uh, I mean, if you're trying to just advocate to loosen some restrictions in zoning, yes, there are communities that could probably do a better job of that. But again, if we don't incentivize this and make it so people uh, are gonna make money on it, it's not gonna happen. So. But thank you for your time, Kevin, and listening to my slides.
Yeah, I really appreciate your comments, and they are addressed within the Economic Action Plan. Uh, certainly it's more than just uh, zoning or policy or forum, but you're exactly right. We shouldn't expect a developer to wake up every day and work on projects that lose themselves money because they'll quickly go out of business and can't feed their own family. So it has to be economically viable to create all types of housing. And right now, the systems and structures in place don't necessarily bear out that way. There's a reason why certain types of housing get built and others don't. Um, this is where we can look to examples from other states, other places around the country that are doing it well. What are the rules and structures and processes that they have in place that allow market-rate homes or middle-income homes to get built at a much cheaper price than they do in Vermont? Um, I was recently reading the book Abundance by Ezra Klein and Derek Thompson, and they were comparing California to Texas and to build one unit of affordable housing in California costs about four times as much as it does in the state of Texas. Same square footage, same materials. Um, but Texas is, I, I'm not saying we turn into Texas, by the way. Please don't throw things at me. They, there are things that we can learn from them though, right? Um, more people moved to the state of Texas last year than the entire population of Vermont. And power to your point, right? If young people aren't staying here, where are they going? Where are they finding opportunity? Where can they realize the American dream? Not only homeownership, but economic opportunity in terms of a labor market. Um, if we're not actively building those things or creating the conditions for those things to emerge here in Vermont, it's, it's a losing battle. And I don't think that, you know, maintaining the status quo is gonna work either because that's where data's really helpful. It shows us trend lines to tell us what might happen if we do nothing. And then the answer is, we're not gonna like the answer. Uh, but that's also why I do this work because to me, data isn't destiny. If we don't like where those trend lines are going, we can make different decisions collectively to rewrite that trend line and, and choose a different future.
Thank you. I, I'm glad then you're not just giving lip services to this whole thing. You, you understand, know the data, a, and you get it. So thank you, Kevin. I guess that was where I, that's where I was hoping you'd go with this, is along the, all these lines. You seem well, well-versed on this, and I certainly hope you can make a difference because, like I said, I, I have a lot of members of my family within this demographic, and things have gotta get better for them, so.
Thanks, Howard. Now make sure to do the following. Plan gets shared that focuses on Zoom and then get a copy of that.
Even, even new people that have moved here hoping to stay, Kevin, I know three of those to date who have had to end up leaving because they couldn't find uh, suitable housing for themselves. So, so it's a serious problem.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Yes, I, I was just wondering what, what your opinion is of the accessory dwelling issue. To me, it's, it's a very promising area. But by putting certain restrictions that they have, like uh, that you have to rent to, I mean, if you get some subsidy from the state to do some of the work, that you have to rent, rent it at below market rates is my understanding, or, or that. And that puts a limitation, you were talking, well, he was talking about, you have to make it worthwhile from a financial standpoint. Because let's say the amount of the subsidy is not gonna do the whole job of the accessory dwellings. You're gonna have to put substantial amount of money into what you're doing. And you'd like to be able to recover that through reasonable rates in the market. So anyway, I'm just curious what other people's reaction would be, whether this seems like a viable thing we're doing or not. Uh, I, I, I'm sort of encouraged with it myself, but I don't see a lot of results yet.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. The question was about ADUs, my thoughts on it, whether it's uh, an adequate solution or if uh, more needs to be done. And I, I think we're at a point where fundamentally we have a housing supply challenge and any solution that helps to bring new supply onto the market, whether it's an ADU or uh, multifamily rental, or a townhome, or even a single-family home, all contribute to the solution. Again, because fundamentally, we are short on housing supply. And new supply anywhere along the spectrum of housing also, again, helps to bring mobility back to the market. I mentioned some of those empty bedrooms in large homes right now. Those um, units who, that are occupied by folks who might want to downsize can only be freed up if folks have an option to downsize them to.
Exactly.
Right. Uh, so I think instead of fixating on, oh, what is the single housing type that's gonna solve all the problems? That's, there's no silver bullet. We should be thinking, how do we bring more supply to the market that solves many people's problems simultaneously? Um, and I, I think about like the automobile market as kind of a parallel um, thought example. Uh, because I, I've seen a lot of antagonization around um, second homes. All right. And I, I'm just curious if anyone's heard of the platform Turo. So it's kind of like Airbnb, but for cars. If you have a second car or third car, you can rent it out to someone who's visiting in the area instead of going through an enterprise or a Hertz. Um, I've never once in my life heard anyone antagonize someone for owning a second vehicle, right? Because we have abundance in the automobile market. Uh, and we could achieve a level of abundance in the housing market such that instead of trying to find scapegoats, we collectively work towards solutions, which is more housing. Yeah.
Yeah, I opened up a can already. Thanks for your presentation. Say you could attract two hundred thousand more people over a certain number of years. It appears you're making an assumption that you're gonna get two hundred thousand people that you want and you need. And I'm curious what work you've done to attract the people you're talking about that you want, but I didn't really hear anything about, except the numbers, how you were gonna do that.
Yep. Yeah, there's a section of the plan that's focused on education and employment alignment. So part of our pipeline of young talent into the state is our colleges and universities are actually doing a really good job attracting people here. Our biggest challenge right now is we don't retain them. Vermont ranks dead last in terms of college graduate retention. So if we can create the types of housing supply that meet the needs of a recent grad, and then within the education system, there's alignment between the educational opportunities and the employment opportunities, then the colleges will be attracting the people that the employers need based on that collaboration. Uh, so some of the answers are already here. And we need to be a little bit more creative about, or intentional about um, being able to, again, create the opportunities that young people might stay for. But the, the folks who are coming to our colleges and universities have already raised their hand and say, I like Vermont enough to spend a portion of my life there to earn a degree. We haven't taken that next step of saying, okay, let's help get you off campus. Let's get you into a local internship. Let's create professional connections and create a social connection to this place beyond just showing up to class.
One more question, John, I care.
So thank you very much. It's interesting. I can really get this many people are involved in planning and start talking about this to the fellow, Milan forever.
Oh, yeah.
I've been involved with zoning and planning for far longer than I like to admit. And having gone through many, many discussions around density, um, it almost always would be worn down, came down to school funding. And people believe, and there was a time in Vermont where if a new house came into your town, it was a direct relationship to your taxes or the school in your town. It's not so direct anymore, but I don't think the message is out that it's not direct because we still get our town's new taxes. And I don't know how to address that from a messaging perspective, but I can tell you that still when you have density discussions with people who've lived in towns for a long time, they believe that a new house next door means their school tax goes up. And so I don't think we've solved that messaging problem.
No, it, it's difficult in the context of Vermont and our education finance system because almost everywhere else in the country, if you're growing your local grant lists and increasing your tax base there, that means more funding in the local school system. But in Vermont, we pool everything at the state level, then redistribute it based on a formula. Uh, and that means a town could potentially vote down their school budget or keep it the same, and then everyone else chooses to spend more. And that town that said, we want to keep our budget the same, still has an increase in their property taxes. So it's created this sort of separation between local decisions and what shows up in the mail for someone's property tax bill, which is what shapes some of these perceptions of, oh, wait, we're, I've seen more houses show up in my neighborhood, but my taxes are going up, so that must be the correlation. Uh, a lot more education needs to be done on how a new home sort of adds to the overall goal. And at the same time, I think we need to reexamine the systems and structures we have in place so that places are incentivized to grow their grant list. Because right now, theoretically, a place could just say no to any growth and have some of their education costs subsidized by other towns.
And, and along those same lines, um, so we're gonna have a further discussion later on tonight about where we're going to have older housing. But I've seen very little tie into where do we have excess capacity in education?
Yeah.
Right? Why aren't we locating our housing where we have excess capacities rather than where we historically have them?
Yep. Uh, great comment. So I showed the latent capacity map to show, uh, represent sort of where there's fewer people today than there used to be in the past. I didn't include it in this presentation, and I don't think it's in the Economic Action Plan, but I have another map I've been working on, which to show school enrollment latent capacity. And this is just data from the agency I've had over the past twenty-ish years. Um, again, over the, that period, we've seen a decline of about twenty thousand students from about a hundred thousand down to eighty thousand. Um, but I can show you town by town exactly which areas of the state have extra capacity in their school buildings because their enrollment is lower now than it used to be. And so that data is available.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Great discussion. Um, now we're gonna move on to commission reports, starting with finance and operations.
We didn't meet, I think you're reporting.
Personnel, Bob.
Personnel, not me.
Executive Committee didn't meet. Project review.
So if you look in your package, it's labeled page thirteen. There were three projects that we reviewed this last month, and all of them were determined to not have a substantial regional impact. They were found to all being in compliance with the region plan. Therefore, no more action was necessary. But you can see that the projects are genuinely what we would consider to be positive for the locality as well as the region. The construction of a larger um, expand, an expansion of the parking at church. For the first, the construction of a garage to provide some uh, better care of the land and uh, barebacks. And then a really nice uh, project at Camp DePenta to bring a lot of their small buildings into uh, larger scale structures that would actually allow them to do more with what they have there.
Thank you. Transportation Advisory Committee, Barclay.
We didn't meet, uh, here for him. Probably one of the biggest group of members that you've seen in a couple of years. And we did um, vote to ask the Pre-Prevention Planning Initiative on to re-revision, and that's further on in the um, agenda. So it's a little aggressive there. But I'll probably not, not too much to talk about. I guess we will not meet until that's done.
Thank you. Grounds fields, Megan. Oh, Megan.
We did not have a meeting this month.
Uh, Regional Plan and Policy, Laura.
The presentation that's coming up, resource integrations to the ten, the comments and questions. And that's any results in those comments that are incorporated in.
Uh, Vermont Economic Progress Council, Barbara.
Meeting tomorrow, and it's, they're doing an update profile and change on both rather than very and stuff that affects our.
Green Mountain Transit, Bob or Catherine?
We're not transit. We are continuing our activities related to the transit of the coast. This is about the RCT.
Community transit.
And also on the side of which we are, also what I'm living in, just the people related to that transport. So after mine, and this RCT team achieved, that's what I think it is. So we're beginning to develop a company called by this name, we're all ready to be ready. And we have nine months, so tell me. So that's on loan. The other big thing I wanted to do was, is the toll sheet, the shuttle on Rome. And when they first developed a parking lot down the way to the shores, um, we're only given six, we're having three fairs, we get to park it down, they sell it. Well, the shuttle, the third street, and we moved in and that's three fair, going to be three for that happen. Um, that's now going to have to a fair process because that shuttle wasn't just a shuttle, it has a lot of other things. We can, so we'll have work for June, June, the speed and road, and I'll pull that off and I got back in the morning.
Okay, Healthy Roots Advisory Committee, Marietta.
We didn't meet.
And Northwest Vermont Regional Foundation, Kirk.
Nothing reported.
Um, staff, anything they want to talk about? Okay, um, we'll move on then to the Regional Plan Presentation. Is it you, Catherine?
Um, that's me, and then Greta, and we are here if there are questions.
Um, that's me, and then Greta and Luke, and we are here if there are questions. Okay, thanks, Dean. And thank you to Dean, who is our technology specialist for our in-person meetings. It's really great, thank you, Dean. Uh, so thanks very much for paying attention to the regional plan. And we're pretty excited with the help of the Regional Plan and Policy Committee, actually the Plan and Policy Committee, and Emily Klop, Lou Slama, and Greta Bronzberg, who've really taken the lead in creating this first full draft of the new regional plan. So the point of this very brief presentation tonight is just to remind you the setting and the purpose of this new regional plan to put it in context for you. I hope you all grabbed a copy of the first draft. There's some more up here, and then there's some blown up maps that I hope you take a look at on the way out if you didn't get a chance to do so on your way in. Great. So I wanted to take a minute to remind you of the new framework of the regional plan under Act one eighty-one, which was passed um last summer. So now our regional plan has additional weight and meaning in two specific areas. Once our regional plan is adopted by this board, we are going to send it to a new state board called the Land Use Review Board. When that Land Use Review Board reviews our plan and says, yes, it meets all the statutory criteria, two things will happen. Number one, areas that we have mapped as growth areas in the regional plan in cooperation with our municipalities, those will be the new state designations. So many of you have designated villages, designated downtowns. Those will now be done by the maps on our regional plan. So upon approval of our regional plan by the state land use board, all the areas that you see on this map in the pink and the maroon are going to be state designated areas that will be eligible for the state incentive programs that were currently only eligible for a much smaller geography. The second thing that will happen is for those municipalities that choose to do so, those same mapped growth areas will be eligible for a special housing exemption under Act fifty. So prior to Act one eighty-one, if you build ten units or more anywhere in the state, you'd need an act to fifty permit. With Act one eighty-one, there's some interim exemptions that are in place now. But long term, for those towns that opted, the areas mapped for growth, you can build up to fifty units of housing without needing to go through Act fifty. So as we're talking about earlier with Kevin's um presentation, there's a lot of barriers to housing growth that we can't control. We can't control um interest rates, we can't control the cost of lumber. Uh, but what we can control is things like permitting. And so that, the purpose of this was to eliminate one barrier to housing development that we do control as a state, as a community. So this regional plan was updated to reflect the new state law. Remember that we did a full overhaul of the regional plan in twenty twenty-three, then we did an energy plan in twenty twenty-four. So this update is much more targeted in nature. Within the introduction, there is two additional sections that were required by the new state law. One addresses environmental justice, and the other is an examination of environmental benefits and burdens. And where there might be disproportionate benefits and burdens on a particular area or a particular group of people, there's a discussion about how our regional plan helps or exacerbates those issues. Within the definitions, um that Bill was just talking about substantial regional impact that project review pays attention to. If a project is of a size that it's substantial regional impact, which is a definition of our regional plan, and if there's a conflict between the local plan and the regional plan, and a project goes through Act two fifty, the regional plan takes precedent. So that's where that definition matters, is projects that are that size and scale. The regional plan will take precedent if there's a conflict with the local plan. And so those, the definition for housing units was raised in that definition to really keep along the same theory of the fifty housing units triggering Act two fifty and trying to increase those numbers so that it matches more with the current paradigm of Act two fifty opportunity with this new law. The land use was completely written, so that is an entirely new chapter. It's an entirely new land use categories that were now included in state law. All regional plans will be the same across the state. Uh, there's eleven different land use categories. They're all defined in state statute, and our staff worked with four municipal officials. Many of you were part of these conversations to look at your zoning, to look at your plans, to look at the state statute and come up with this new map that reflects a combination of all of those things. So that is brand new. What didn't change in that chapter, though, is the goals and policies. So the goals and policies remain the same as our twenty twenty-three plan, except that we changed the names of the land use areas to reflect the new names for the growth areas and the conservation areas. And then housing. Um, we did a very large update to housing in twenty twenty-three to reflect our housing needs assessment that was done. But the big change in housing was related to new regional and municipal housing targets. And I'll talk about those a little bit more in a minute. Um, and then also some data updates when available. And then finding throughout the whole plan where there were key data points that we had some updates available, we did those. And then we changed references to land use categories to make sure it was all consistent with the new land use categories. So a quick review of the future land use areas, this is where they're listed here, there's eleven different categories. As I noted, the ones that are eligible for a state designation program and the Act two fifty exemption are the downtown centers, village centers, the planned growth areas, which are typically around downtowns, and the village areas, which are typically around the village centers. And so if you, it's on page one eleven in your regional plan, I think I wrote that down, yeah, one eleven. So if you want to look at a closer version, you can see um that there's that full map of the region, and then following that, there's a map of these special law maps of the planned growth areas in villages, so you can get a better look of um where where your community's been mapped. And here it is right here. So again, when you look at the the downtown village centers, planned growth areas in the village areas, it's the maroons and the pinks. Those are the areas eligible for the state designation program and the areas eligible for the different Act fifty jurisdiction for housing. So regional housing targets, Act one eighty-one required the state of Vermont to create a statewide housing target to take that statewide housing target and divide it among the eleven regional planning commissions. And then our job as the regional planning commission was to take that target and assign it to each municipality. As was noted in Kevin's presentation, we know the housing market isn't working. This housing target is based on fixing it. So if, when, when you look in the regional plan and you look at um the municipal breakdown, which is on page sixty-one, um, the municipal breakdown, there's low and then there's high. And so the the low target is really based on making some fixes to the housing market, like housing those who are unhoused, um meeting some of the current unmet need. The high target is really set on actually fixing the housing market. So making sure that there's enough availability, so there's churn in the for sale and purchasing of homes, that there's opportunity for new housing for people who want to live here, who aren't here now, and that there is um at least a decrease in the acceleration of housing cost prices. I wouldn't say that they're ever going to go down again, but at least a slower increase rate would be really wonderful. So when you look at the town by town write down, that will really, the the that's the difference between the low and the high. For every town, almost every town in our region, except a few like Fletcher, it um the municipal targets would assume about a doubling of the housing growth rate that you had in the two thousand to twenty twenty timeframe. And then I just want to talk briefly on the outreach and adoption schedule, let you know where we are in the process. So the overall project schedule, we've done phase one, we were prepared. And phase two, where we met with all of our municipalities, some of them multiple times, all of them at least once. And then we're now in phase three, so we have a full draft. We did a whole series of outreach in the months of June and July. And then we're going to be embarking on a whole new set of outreach opportunities in the month of August. The goal is to have a new draft regional plan by the September board meeting. And then after that, we will be starting the adoption process, which, under this new framework, is going to take about six months. That's right. So we'll blow that out a little bit more for you. So we are right here in July twenty twenty-five, um where you have a first full draft. The committee has has seen all the pieces and parts, but this is your first opportunity to see all of it together. We're hoping to hear uh from you, your comments, your thoughts through the month of August to get us your feedback, get us your comments. The the Plan and Policy Committee will be meeting in September, and we'll be presenting to them the recommended changes based on all the feedback that we get. At the end of Sep- at the September board meeting, we are hoping that we will have a draft plan that you as a board says, okay, this is pretty close. So it's okay now for you to send it to the state land use review board for their advanced review. Under this new system, they get a sixty day advance review before we start our official parent process. So the planning can continue to change, but that gives that board an opportunity to tell you as the board and us as the staff what might need to change in order for it to be approved later on. So it's a great um pre-review opportunity. So our hope is at the September meeting, you're comfortable enough that you say, great, go ahead and send it to that state land use review board. We'll get their comments back in the December-ish timeframe. And then we'll incorporate changes that we need to incorporate with a goal of having the board vote to adopt the plan at the February board meeting. We'll then send it again to the land use review boards where they would make their final decision, hopefully five months. So it's a long adoption process now, much longer than it was before. And that's it in a nutshell.
But I have still, basically, what's going through my mind is optimum result for you is a hundred and fifty thousand people we gained are all the twenty to sixty demographic. And is there an overlay or any correlating between housing needs, housing to be built, and job opportunities? Because homes and high market with jobs in Burlington are just going to need more patience on the road, um and not really be as effective as they could be if the if the new housing is built. So do we, do we try and generate jobs in more rural areas? Or do we try and concentrate in the housing? Where the job opportunities are going to be, the closer, closer they are, the more likely we're going to get people staying out of college or moving in from from other graduations.
You want me to hop in?
You can ask, you can give your answer, that'll get mine.
On page thirty-nine of the economic action plan, there's a section on smart growth. There's a map here that shows the um distribution of jobs and homes around the state. So the color coding is based on that ratio. Some towns, to your point, have a higher ratio of jobs to homes, and there's a lot of people commuting to those places. And other places have a lot of homes and not a lot of jobs. So it gives um data municipal level to guide, what should that strategy be? Should we be investing in economic development to bring up jobs closer to where people are already located? Or should homes be built in places where the jobs already exist? Um, the answer's going to be different town to town, but start with the data.
I guess my follow-up for that word was this concept about when the state decided to change the Act two fifty rules and make the regional plans that don't, so we have.
Yeah, it it actually was, and I I, you know, I think my answer to that, to your question is yes and yes. Right? Like, we need to do both, it's just the scale is different. Right? Like, we do need to create more rural economic opportunities, not the same scale that exists in our more developed areas, but we need growth. And uh the, when you look at the regional map, you will see that every community in our region, regardless of size and population, has an opportunity to have a state designated area where there are um some state incentives for development to be located in those areas and the opportunity to narrow Act two fifty for the higher Act two fifty jurisdiction threshold. So it does give every municipality in the region a chance to participate. And that's something that didn't exist before. I was, you're surprised it didn't have the capacity to move to through the whole application process. We're losing out on those opportunities, and now you don't have to have the capacity in order to take advantage. Greta or Emily or Luke, did you want to add anything? All right, so um Greta um is working, I think with Emily and Luke, on some outreach opportunities in August, and we'll send you a notice and email with all of those additional outreach opportunities. Why, we'll take your comments anytime for them to be most helpful to us in terms of incorporating them into the next draft of the regional plan. It would be great to get them by the end of August. So you have a, you have a little time to read that, you don't have to take it home, I read it tonight in very detail. Yes, Elizabeth, you can give me a marked up copy, but. Yes.
Um, how was it written? Because I went on an online version.
Yeah.
But I didn't know, so I have a gave this, I have my own notes. Um, if I take a paper copy, I have a big picture, I just, how do you want this comment?
I will take them whatever way works best for each of you. So if you want to just handwrite and markup, as long as I can read your writing, a paper version, and that is us, I'll take it that way. If you want to, like, Peter likes to send me page this, here's my comment, page this, that's my comment. Other people put comments in the actual PDF, whatever works for you is fine with me.
And we can download the version?
Yes. Yeah. And if there, if there's a full version you can download, or you can do it in pieces if you can't download one all at once.
Thank you, Catherine. Uh, there's been a lot of work put in these changes, and you please take some time to take a look at and provide feedback. These are a lot of significant changes that are hopefully to be around for a while, so this is an important aspect of our work. The next item is committee assignments. You may recall that last month, we elected chairs to the standing committees. And at that meeting, Catherine asked for nominations or expressions of interest to serve on various committees. And since that time, based on her work, um we've come up with a list of members for each of these committees. This um on the page, Act of page thirteen in the book that just went out yesterday, I think. Um, and um we would like to uh entertain um a a motion at some point uh on on these proposed um um members on the various committees. Uh, covers personnel, project review, regional plan and policy, finance and operations, executive, and code of conduct. So first of all, Catherine, do you have anything you want to add? Okay, so, um.
There's a rich box of examples, it just to find them all.
Yes, thank you, Elizabeth. And I just started sending you these before.
So would anyone like to take a mo- make a motion with respect to this proposal? Yes, Bill.
Yes, I'd like to move the word of Bakersfield that we, this bill you're taking six committee assignments. We approved that presumably in the for- we have tonight.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. A proposed extensions. The motion carries. Um, the last substantive item is the fiscal year twenty-six Transportation Advisory Committee Star Work Program. And Barclay, are you going to give us?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just it's, I had all the work to file. Uh, at our last meeting, the second, you say this one, they escaped me. Uh, we reviewed and passed the transportation planning initiative work program for twenty twenty-six. This will go, we will we need to see track and keep up. And there really were very few changes from previous year. Um, there were some deletions because projects were deleted. And it wasn't copied in the packet. And I guess I have to say, if anybody has any specific questions, I'll send over here. Well, if there are not, I will ask for a motion. It was a nasty, acidified commission or it can be presented safe. But we can move on to discuss that maybe the notes on that are later approved with the uh expectation and planning initiative.
Second.
What's that name?
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Extensions. The motion carries. Um, the last item is commissioner announcements. You have.
I love this, um, I'm Transportation Advisory Committee report. But also at the last meeting, our two summer interns presented their view of the culverts um for the portion of the value rail trail assets from Frankie County. They did a very impressive job. Um, they managed to avoid the parsnip and poison ivy that lines the trail, because I've written it a number of times. And you can correct me, but I think they said that there was at least one culprit of seventy-five feet or above the level of the trail that they had to climb down, but find what sort of shape it was in. Um, but they did a phenomenal job and I would just like to congratulate them.
Thank you. Other announcements? Yeah.
You have a good question, Peter. Was there any email that we can send a question to Thomas to for like Kevin to put the presentation tonight? Um, excellent presentation, but I left none of us. Also, I didn't even send out comments and questions.
Definitely. Um, it's at the bottom of the one pager, the fun titled.
Okay. That works. Thank you.
I will be on vacation the next few days, so please wait till next week.
And I'll send the presentation out too.
Okay. Building a house.
I am working on my progress right now.
Any other commissioner announcements?
Howard. I'm sorry, since Howard had his hand up.
Oh, Howard, go ahead.
Oh, nice.
Oh, thank you. It's Amelia.
Hi, nice to meet you all. Thank you for your confidence.
Welcome. Great to have a little diversity on this.
Sorry to miss the first hour. I was at work, so.
So we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, I just want to take a minute to thank Amy for all for organizing this event. Thank you, Amy.
Is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? We are adjourned.